Continue to give an audience.
I want to thank everybody.
Do you know what I need to meet?
For your patience this evening. I want to make sure that sound quality is okay. Ms. Rios, we confirm.
Um, there is an echo with Dr. Roberts. Hi.
I think I have it.
Okay, yep. I would like to call the school board meeting for Tuesday, May 21st, 2024, for the Des Moines Public Schools to order. Ms. Rios, could you please take the role?
Yes, Ms. Alonso Diaz.
Here.
Mr. Ms. Campos.
Present.
Mr. Dix.
Here.
Ms. Knox.
Here.
Ms. Mar Torano.
Here.
Mr. Mayberry Mays.
Here.
Ms. Norris.
Here.
We have quorum.
The first item of business is approval of the agenda. May have a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
Mar Torano, so moved.
Campos, second.
We have a motion by Mar Torano and a second by Campos. Board members, please cast your votes. I'll take it by roll call. Ms. Campos?
Yes.
Ms. Knox?
Yes.
Ms. Mar Torano?
Yes.
Mr. Mayberry Mays?
Yes.
Ms. Alonso?
Yes.
Ms. Norris, yes. Mr. Dix?
Yes.
The vote is approved seven to zero. Dr. Roberts, I know that the weather has caused a complete change in our plans. Are there any district recognitions you would like to share? And or would you let us know when you plan to move those district recognitions forward?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, uh, I can use yours.
There's no audio.
Because of the National Weather Services forecast, we wanted to prioritize safety and well-being of not only our students but our staff. And so we have decided to punt our district's recognitions to the next board meeting, the first week of June. So there are no recognitions this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, we truly appreciate everybody's flexibility with us. And we thought it was very important to keep the health and well-being of staff and our students as paramount. Thank you for your patience. Next on the agenda is the public forum, followed by the consent and regular agenda. We provide speakers at the forum an opportunity to address the board for up to three minutes regarding items that are not on the board agenda. We also allow any person the opportunity to speak to the board for up to five minutes following the presentation of an agenda item. If anyone wishes to speak during any portion of the business meeting, please email rosa.rios@dmschools.org. The same speaking protocols apply to all individuals who wish to address the board. Speakers will be called individually, and we ask they state their name and address prior to providing comments. Students and minors do not have to provide their addresses. Guests of the board are encouraged to speak to matters relating to the programs, services, and operations of DMPS. Please remember that Iowa law prohibits us from discussing specific employees or their job performance. We ask all speakers to avoid references to personalities or character attacks as those types of comments do not contribute to the purpose for which this public forum exists. The use of inappropriate language will not be tolerated, and individuals choosing to do so will be gavelled out of order and asked to excuse themselves from the premises or escorted out by district security. As a reminder to the board and public, the board will not engage in a discussion with public forum speakers as it is our obligation to discuss only matters posted in the public agenda for the sake of transparency and opportunity afforded to all community stakeholders. Matters requiring attention will receive appropriate staff and/or board follow-up at a time after the meeting. Thanks for your participation. We appreciate your feedback and impact. Ms. Rios, are there any speakers?
Yes, there are. First up, I'd like to call RJ Miller. If you are present, please go ahead and unmute. Give it a couple of seconds. Okay. Next speaker is Heidi Estrella, and she will be also translated by a family member. Heidi Estrella? Puedes proceder.
Hola. Si, Mari, ¿estás ahí?
Sí, estoy aquí. I'm here. Okay.
Hi. Mi nombre es Heidi Estrella. Soy... I'm the Haydel Jodiela Rivera Estrella mom. I'm going to speak in Spanish because I wanted everybody to understand what I'm saying. Eh... Mi hijo fue aceptado en la Universidad de Boston University con un internado en Inglaterra.
My son, he was accepted in Boston University with the, um... I'm sorry, with housing in Inglaterra. England.
Trabajó muy duro durante todos estos años para tener un GPA muy alto.
He worked very hard all these years for him to have a GPA very high.
Tiene más de 300 horas comunitarias.
He has more than 300 hours' community service.
Es el Big Fisher College Board Ambassador.
You guys understand that?
Hey. I think if you want to just translate what she said, that would be great.
Um, she said that he's the ambassador... I'm sorry, Heidi, can you repeat that again, please?
Okay, él es embajador, el embajador de futuro, de futuro grande de college board.
Okay, he is the ambassador of future, big futures of a college board.
Tesorero de la Sociedad de Honor.
He is the treasurer of the Honor Society.
Voluntario de CYC.
He's volunteer of CYC.
Y en su marketing board.
In his marketing board.
Miembro de Open Brown, entre otras cosas.
He is member of Open Brown, um, and more other things.
Se ganó ayer una medalla de primer lugar en francés.
He won yesterday a medal on first place in French class.
En Central Academy. Tiene otra. Toda esta carpeta es sobre su trabajo duro.
He has another medal, and all this carpet that I have in here is all with his break connections that he has since he's been working hard.
Sin embargo, todo ese trabajo duro se vio pagado.
But all that hard work is just went away from all the work he did.
Ya que en la North High School.
Because in North High School.
Nadie nos orientó.
Nobody orientated us.
Que él tenía que llenar un profile que se llama CSS.
That he needed to fill it up, a profile that is called C... What was the letters?
CSS.
CSS.
Ese profile determina cuánta ayuda económica le pueden brindar.
That profile will tell them how much of the... They will have paid for his academy.
No, eh, cuánto dinero la universidad le va a ofrecer a él.
Oh, how much, I'm sorry. How much money the university will give him to go to that university?
Okay. Como ese profile no se llenó.
Because that profile was not filled it up.
Ya la universidad no tiene fondos o ayuda para Hayden.
Now, the university, the college doesn't have the funds for him to go to that university.
Cuando hablé en la escuela para saber por qué no nos habían orientado.
When I talk in school to know why they did not orient them.
Sobre eso.
Of that.
El consejero nos dijo.
The counselor tell us.
Que algunas universidades lo piden y otras no.
That some colleges ask for and others not.
Y el director no sabía qué era.
And the principal of the school doesn't know what it was about.
Esta circunstancia.
These circumstances.
Es algo inaceptable.
Is something unacceptable.
Porque a principios de este año.
Because in beginning of this year.
Me reuní con el director de la escuela y los consejeros.
I was in a meeting with the principal and the counselors of the school.
Para hablar de las metas de mi, de Hayden.
To talk about the goals of my son.
Y para pedirle que nos ayudaran.
And to ask them, "Please help us."
Con toda la información que necesitábamos.
With all the information that we needed.
Para que él pudiera, para que él pudiera cumplir su meta.
For him to achieve his goal.
Para entrar a una buena universidad.
To be accepted in a good college.
No tan solo hablé este año.
Not only I talked this year.
Yo he buscado ayuda para mi hijo.
I've been looking for help for my son.
Desde que él entró a la escuela.
Since he went to that school.
Inclusive antes de entrar, había, antes de entrar, había llamado y hablado para decir que éramos nuevos.
Even before, she called to the school to let them know they were gonna be a new student in that school.
Que él era un excelente estudiante.
That he was an excellent student.
Y que yo no quería.
And that I did not want it.
Que yo por haberme mudado de país.
That for me, because I moved from country.
Mi hijo le cortarán las alas académicamente.
That they will cut his wings in an academic, um, journey.
Mi hijo siempre ha trabajado duro por su futuro, inclusive el año pasado.
My son always been working hard for his future, even last year.
Decidió no participar en un baile.
He decides to not participate in a dance, in a ball.
En el festival más grande de Estados Unidos.
In the fest, in the biggest festival in US.
Solo por estudiar unos cursos para créditos, para créditos universitarios.
Just for him to study some extra credits for his academic future.
Cuando mi hijo empezó en la escu, en la North.
When my son started North.
Nadie nos habló de las clases AP.
Nobody talked to them about the AP classes.
No sabíamos de eso, si no es que yo me entero ya en el grado 10.
We don't know about those classes until he began to be in 10th grade.
Hablé con la consejera y le dije por qué nadie nos había hablado de esas clases AP.
I talked to the counselor in that time, and I asked them why we were not informed or why you guys did not give us information about those type of classes.
Siendo bilingüe y teniendo tan buen promedio.
Being him bilingual and have a good GPA.
Ahí fue que entonces comenzó a coger las clases AP.
That's when he start to take the classes AP.
Es el trabajo de la escuela orientar a los estudiantes.
It's the school job to orientate all the students.
También mi hijo perdió la oportunidad de entrar en Central Academy.
And my son lost the opportunity to went to Central Academy.
Más temprano.
Earlier.
Porque la escuela no lo matriculó a tiempo.
Because the school did not register him on time on Central campus.
Otra.
Another one.
Cuando mi hijo fue a tomar su examen AP de español.
When he went to take the assessment of AP in Spanish.
Hubo un error en el sistema.
It was an error in the system.
Y su nombre no, no estuvo.
And his name, it was not there.
Tuvo que esperar un año para poder tomar ese examen.
He waited one year for him to be able to get that, to take that test.
Otro error más de la escuela.
Another error of the school.
Nos quedan 30 segundos. Esto es muy importante, necesito terminar, ya me falta poco, por favor. Adicional. Adicional.
Additional.
Cuando fue a tomar su ACT en la escuela Roosevelt.
When he went to take the test in Roosevelt.
La escuela estaba cerrada.
The school was closed.
Eh... Otra, nadie, nadie en la escuela sabía que él era Big Fisher Ambassador. Nadie dijo nada, nadie ni...
Nobody, nobody knew in the school that he was ambassador. Nobody informed nobody.
Eh... Tengo, tengo que avanzar, estoy cortando, pero esto es muy importante.
I'm trying to hurry up, this is very important.
Okay. Y hay muchísimas cosas más.
There are a lot of more things.
Pero ustedes solo dan tres minutos.
But you only give three minutes.
Ustedes le cortaron las alas a mi hijo.
Um, you guys cut my son's wings.
Yo confié en un sistema.
I trust the system.
Que nos defraudó desde el primer momento.
That they, um, it was like fraud for us from the beginning.
Todavía es la hora que ni el director.
This is the time, then not even the director, the principal.
Ni el consejero.
None, the counselor.
Se han reunido o hablado con Hayden a decirle.
They did not even made a meeting to talk to Hayden.
Sentimos mucho que por ese error no pudiste entrar a la Universidad de Boston.
And we are very sorry that because of this big, um, error, he cannot go to Boston University.
Cuando ya era aceptado.
When he was already accepted.
Les pregunto qué están, qué está haciendo la escuela y ustedes.
I have a question for you. What are the school doing and what are you guys doing?
Por los estudiantes que sí se esfuerzan.
For the students that really work hard for their future.
Yo ya he hablado con varias de ustedes.
I already talked to a few of you.
De este panel.
From this panel.
Acerca de las metas de mi hijo y de su trabajo duro.
About the goals and achievement of my, and my son's hard work.
Él cumplió su meta, fue aceptado, y por el sistema no preparar.
He achieved his work and he was accepted, but because of the bad work.
Por, por el sistema no preparar a los consejeros.
Because the system did not, um, advise, I mean, prepare very good the counselors.
Como se debe ser.
How it has to be.
Mi hijo vio.
My son saw.
Cómo se perdió todo su esfuerzo.
How all his effort went lost.
No es justo.
It's not fair.
Ustedes cortaron sus alas.
You guys cut his wings.
A nadie le importó.
Nobody cares.
Siempre lo que recibimos es su, "Oh, oh, I'm sorry."
All we get is just, "Oh, we are sorry."
El cual no es cierto.
What is not true.
Sería todo, ya que no tengo mucho tiempo, pero esto es muchísimo más.
That's all, because I don't have enough time, but it's much more what I have to say.
Gracias, thank you. Next speaker is David McCudden.
Hello? Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Yes, we can. You have three minutes to address the board.
Okay. David McCudden, present, 410 North Hickory Boulevard, Pleasant Hill, Iowa. I've spoken to you several times about students at Brubaker Elementary. This is, this year I helped 21 third-grade students with math. Many of them have exceeded my expectations. Several students are working on multiplying double-digit numbers. However, there are still students that are struggling with addition and subtraction. One time that I did get a board member to come to my daughter's classroom, the board member and the principal agreed with curriculum staff member who said that she saw no students that were struggling with addition or subtraction. That was this spring, and I still have students struggling with addition and subtraction. I don't know how you can address a problem if you won't admit that there is a problem. My daughter was optimistic when Dr. Roberts spoke to the teacher at Brubaker. She thought Dr. Roberts would address some of their concerns. She was told that the teacher would get feedback within two weeks. Over a month later, they finally got some feedback from Lord. The feedback was basically that the teacher should look in the mirror as to the failings in the student's education. I'm very proud of the effort of my daughter, that my daughter puts into teaching. Unfortunately, she is leaving Brubaker Elementary along with 18 other staff members. Much of this is due to you on the board and the principal at Brubaker. My daughter was told that she was being moved from third grade to fourth grade next year, and she didn't want to move to fourth grade. That didn't matter to the principal. A few days ago, I spoke to a student case manager at Brubaker. I could tell something was wrong. She usually has a smile on her face. She told me she was being moved into an office with two other people, and as a student case manager, she deals with a lot of privacy issues. Her off, her office offers that privacy. It has a curtain on the door that can be closed when talking to a student or a guardian. She gave the principal six other options to consider, and the principal didn't consider them. It wouldn't take long to see why so many teachers and staff are leaving Brubaker if you're willing to admit that there was a problem. A leader is someone that sets an example that others want to follow. A leader can build team, can build a team that will work together for a common goal. A tyrant is just the opposite. A tyrant can destroy any kind of teamwork that has been built. You can guess what category I think the principal of Brubaker falls under. The main reason teachers talk to me is because they trust me. Uh... They don't trust anyone in leadership at DMPS. You will have to earn that back. I'd appreciate anyone's help with the students at Brubaker. I feel like I'm spitting on a fire alarm fire, and no one will admit that there's a fire. At the March 5th board meeting, I watched you, board members, give yourselves zero scores on goal achievement, with no idea of what to do to improve achievement of your goals.
30 seconds remaining.
Okay. I've asked repeatedly for you, board members, to spend more time in classrooms listening to teachers and students. If you'd act on some of their ideas, I think progress would be amazing. Teachers don't feel heard or appreciated by you. I receive a lot of appreciation from teachers and students, and I appreciate the teachers and I hear them. But it's pretty obvious that either you don't hear me or you don't like what I have to say. Feedback would be wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you. I would like to call for any additional speakers on the meeting call before we close the public forum. Please unmute or you can raise your hand. Okay, those are all the speakers we have. Thank you. We will now move to the consent agenda items. Mr. Mayberry Mays, I believe that you have the consent agenda items this evening.
Yes, I moved that the board... I moved that the board approved the consent items in accordance with the recommended action for each item on the consent agenda, including bills previously authorized, certified, and approved for payment by the board secretary in the amount of $4,150,574.06 and procurement transactions in the amount of $828,181.69.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Mayberry Mays and a second by Ms. Mar Torano. Is there any discussion or does anyone have any questions? Ms. Rios, would you please take the vote?
Ms. Alonso Diaz?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Campos?
Yes.
Mr. Dix?
Yes.
Ms. Knox?
Yes.
Ms. Mar Torano?
Yes.
Mr. Mayberry Mays?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
The consent agenda items are approved seven to zero. Next, we have information-only items. The first item is E1, board member of conflict of interest forum submitted by Mr. Mayberry Mays. The second is item E2, board committee assignments. We'll move to items of privilege next on the agenda. Uh, board members, I'd like to ask all of you if you would like to share anything at this time.
I would just like to congratulate our seniors and I'm very excited and happy for your upcoming graduation ceremonies. I know that we've already had one graduation ceremony completed already, and we have several more this weekend. Uh, this milestone marks the culmination of years of hard work and dedication. So I celebrate your achievements of your graduating class and wish you all success in your future endeavors.
Thanks, Ms. Mar Torano. Others? So I have two. Um, the first one is a congratulations to one of our own board members. If we had not been delayed by the storm, I would have had flowers and a card, and we would have presented it to our graduate at the board table who is almost complete with her MBA and celebrated a graduation this weekend. So we are really proud of you, Ms. Knox. Congratulations. So we are really proud of you, Ms. Knox. Congratulations. And, and I too just want to thanks specifically to our principal and staff at Lincoln High School. Yesterday, we had a wonderful conversation with parents around mental health and some of the challenges that students are navigating in a very complex world with technology, and just really appreciated the participation and open dialogue around some really tough topics. So I want to say thank you to Lincoln High School. Any other board members that would like to share at this time?
Well, I wasn't going to share, but I'm going to. Um, so I did walk in my graduation on Sunday from Drake University, and what it really made me think about was saying congratulations to all the incredible educators. I would say half of my, uh, the graduates with their master's degrees were our educators. Many Des Moines Public Schools educators, Saad Des Moines Public Schools staff members that were also there graduating with an MBA or other master's degree. So shout out to our educators and our educational leaders for continuing to bring the highest caliber of teaching and professionalism here to Des Moines Public Schools. My hat's off to all of you for all that you do.
Thanks, Ms. Knox. Any final comments from board members? Dr. Roberts, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just to certainly echo the sentiments that were shared by board members already about this time of year. This is without a doubt one of the most exciting times of the year for us as we celebrate not only our students, who will walk across the stage during this milestone accomplishment, but we celebrate their families. For many of us, graduation is more than just what the student has done or what he or she has accomplished. For many of our students, graduation is about elevating the dreams and goals of their families, and for that, we are excited. We are looking forward to a number of really elegant graduation ceremonies this, this weekend. I know we've planned them. Schools are looking forward to those. And so, I, along with board members, will be present at each of those graduation ceremonies and are excited to celebrate you. I want to certainly acknowledge just the outstanding work of our teachers, leaders, and staff. And I want to specifically speak to the work that has been done by teachers and staff this year during my first year in this organization. It is clear to me that we have one of the most impressive cadre of educators any place in the United States. It's always challenging, but we know that it's inevitable that some teachers will move on from the district for a myriad of reasons. But based on the data, because we are a data-driven decision-making institution, this year, we've had one of the strongest retention rate of our teachers than we've had in the past three years. And for that, I want to say kudos to teachers who are staying put and hanging here and continuing to serve our students well. And for teachers who are moving on for a number of reasons, either personal, family, or our opportunities, we thank them for their service and we wish them well. The 30-plus thousand students in the Des Moines Public Schools deserve only the best, most committed and dedicated teachers, staff, and leaders. And we will continue to make sure that we will support all of our students who knock on our doors in the next school year with the highest quality delivery of instruction, operation, and educational excellence. Teachers, I know that this is the last board meeting before the end of the year, and many of you may or may not log in as you are enjoying much deserved rest and vacation. So thank you. Thanks for all that you've done for us this year. Madam Chair concludes this evening's remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. And thank you all of us for joining this evening. We appreciate your patience as we navigated some technology and weather challenges. But we greatly appreciate all of you for being here. The meeting is adjourned at 6:09, and we are going to take a brief break and move into our closed personnel session. Thank you very much.